Don't have any comments, so I will officially close the public hearing and we will move on. Adoption and approval of the agenda for tonight, June 23rd, 2020.
I move to approve.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, opposed? All right, special recognitions reports and presentations. A recognition of Petaluma City Schools 2019-20 retirees. We want to thank you for your service to our district and we wish you all the best. And anybody else want to say something? Gary?
I think we're gonna, well, we were disappointed this year that because we couldn't do an in-person reception, that we, we still are planning to do that. It's important to us, just like with our students. But just not doing anything seemed awkward as well. So we took a little bit of time and put something together for you and for everybody that's watching. And I'm going to pass it on. I believe Ashley is going to jump on the screen and take over. Is that correct?
That's correct. Can you guys hear me as well?
Everybody might want to mute themselves, at least board.
Can you guys see?
Yes.
Congratulations to the 2019-2020 retirees of Petaluma City Schools. We're so, we have been so fortunate to have each and every one of you as an employee in our district. Often when I'm out giving service pins at all the different school sites, I think about how many years of service and how many student lives have been touched by our employees. And in this group of retirees, we have 34 retirees who have given 677 years of service to all the students and families of Petaluma City Schools. Again, thank you so much for your service.
Congratulations to everyone retiring this year. When I look at the list, I see that it reflects so much experience and so much work that you've done on behalf of all the students of Petaluma City Schools. So thank you. Thank you for all that you've done for students. Thank you for all that you did to make your school better for students and staff. I want to thank you for being up here. I know that you helped mentor new teachers. You probably helped mentor a few new admin in your time as well. Always wanting your school to be, your site to be the best it possibly could. Thank you for helping a friend next door who may have been having trouble. Probably heard some stories in the lunchroom a time or two and helped work out some problems. All the planning that you've done, all the mentoring that you did in lessons and bringing people along. So your work lives on and will go on, and that is a wonderful thing. So I'm sorry that we can't celebrate you the way we should. Hopefully in a year or so, we can have a great big party and celebrate all of you. So for now, I just hope you have a wonderful retirement and you stay well.
Hi, I'm Loretta Cruz-Maggi, the president of CSCA Chapter 212 here at Petaluma. And I would like to take this time to say thank you to each and every one of the classified people who retired during this past school year. I hope you enjoy your retirement.
Hi, I just want to say congratulations to all the retirees. You are so valued in our community and it's going to be difficult to replace you. Whether you are a teacher in and out of the classroom every single day or you're a classified employee providing support so learning can take place, we're going to miss you. And we just hope that you have a safe, relaxing, and restful retirement and that you will come back to SUB after your, after your six months are up. We really look forward to seeing you again. And please stop by the district office and say hello to us from time to time.
Congratulations Eric Norstad, who is retiring after 24 years at Petaluma City Schools. Eric worked at McKinley for 11 years and McMeer for 13, teaching well over 600 students in grades four through six. We will miss you and hope that you have an amazing retirement. Congratulations Laurel. We all learned so much from you throughout the 24 years you spent with us. Your dedication to students and families, your late night hours spent prepping to make each day matter, and your lifelong learning has been truly inspiring. We are so grateful for your years of service to the McMeer community and beyond. Cindy Schlueter has been an outstanding and dedicated reading specialist who spent 15 years at Petaluma City Schools. She has been such a team player at McDowell, well-loved by colleagues and students alike. She spreads joy for reading to so many students. Thank you Cindy. Ms. Lee Hill will be retiring at the end of this school year after over 15 years of service in education at Petaluma City Schools. We are so grateful to have had her as a member of the grant community in her final year of teaching. We wish her many years of fun, adventure, and joy in this next chapter of her amazing life. Mark Mortison, who has been part of the PCS community for 19 years, is a worthy recipient of the Always There Award, which the PTA had to create just for him. Mark has contributed so much to the McDowell community. He will be so missed for his fantastic attitude, steadfast support, willingness to collaborate, and dedication to doing what is best for students. Greg Schmidt completed 20 years as an educator at PCS and also served as the boys' basketball coach for the majority of those years. His classroom was the place where students would congregate at lunch, so much so that he purchased ping pong tables and ran tournaments. We wish him all the best and look forward to seeing what he does in his third career now that he has a PhD in psychology. Ms. Rose is wrapping up her 30th year as a science teacher at Kenneworth. She's done a ton of work with the Petaluma watershed and has created curriculums specifically pertaining to the creek at the back of Kenneworth's property. Ms. Rose has served as department chair for many years and has taken many of our new teachers under her wing. Mrs. Rose's smile and upbeat attitude will be missed. Inez Reed is retiring after 27 years of service at Petaluma City Schools. She spent most of her career teaching families at both McKinley and Grant. She has given so many of our youngest learners a solid foundation for success. We wish her so much joy, love, and adventure in this next chapter of her life. After 15 years, the bus is empty and the keys have been hung for the final time. We are so grateful for Jarred Orner and his commitment to the students of Petaluma City Schools. The transportation department will miss Jarred and his willingness to step in and assist coworkers with anything they needed. We wish you nothing but the best in your new journey. Teri Baranque has spent 19 years with Petaluma City Schools. Teri was named Sonoma County Teacher of the Month in October 2019 while working at Pengrove Elementary. Thank you for loving your students with your whole heart. We will miss your creative and artistic teaching, Ms. Baranque. Tony Newbacher has served as Kenneworth's ELRT and ELD teacher and is completing her 16th year with PCS. As an EL teacher, she has had the privilege of working with students who have spoken languages from over 35 countries. We wish her all the best in her future endeavors and hope she will come back to visit soon. Petaluma Adult School wishes Vera Nickel a very happy retirement after her 16 years at Petaluma City Schools. She and her positive attitude, intelligence, sense of humor, and ability to support adult learners in acquiring computer skills will be much missed. Thank you Vera.
Petaluma City Schools, Petaluma Junior High School, and Special Services would like to congratulate Carol Salzano, Special Education Teacher, on her retirement. Carol's career in education spanned 39 years, 29 of which were served at Petaluma Junior High School. We thank you for your excellence, commitment, and your unwavering faith in your students' abilities. We wish you a long and happy and healthy retirement, and we hope all of your retirement dreams are fulfilled. Special Services would like to congratulate our retirees Joyce Cabral, Special Services Secretary, Maureen Kennedy, Full Inclusion Teacher, Teri Shersett, Speech and Language Pathologist, and Elise Gossberg, Speech and Language Pathologist, on their retirement. On behalf of Petaluma City Schools and Special Services, we would like to thank you for your service to our district, our students, our families, and our community. We thank you for your kindness, your compassion, your creativity, your expertise, and your commitment. We wish you a long, happy, and healthy journey in your retirement, filled with adventures, peace, and happiness.
Carlos Potello served PCS for over 22 years. As a float custodian, he serviced all the sites of the district and everywhere he went, everyone loved him. He was our hero and lifesaver on many occasions with his positive can-do attitude and his easygoing style. Carlos, we'll miss you, but we wish you the best in your retirement. You deserve it. John Ruston has been a strong presence at Casa Grande High School, having served many successful years as the director of the drama program. Each year, our community was blessed with several top-notch productions featuring our talented students, all expertly directed by Dr. Ruston. Thank you for all your years of service. Christiane Trab has been a pillar of the World Languages Department for many years, teaching French and serving as department chair. Ms. Trab was and is a consummate professional and will always be remembered for her impeccable dress, skillful teaching, and positive attitude. Thank you, Ms. Trab, for all of your service. Doug Carhart and Special Education were a match meant to be. For over 20 years, Doug has provided mentorship for students who have struggled with academics. In testament to his positive impact on our school, some of his students were moved to tears when he told them he was retiring. We will miss you Doug. Deborah Fitch is retiring after 20 years with Petaluma City Schools. We all know you have too much energy to relax too much, but we hope you take some time at the start of this new phase to breathe and enjoy a fall without a school start. Thanks Deborah. Jaclyn Savage has been a wealth of information and support to the Petaluma High community over the years. She deserves the best rest and relaxation possible for all the hard work and dedication she gave to the HHS. She always served our students in the best possible ways. Thank you Jaclyn. Janine Bender has dedicated the past 23 years to supporting Petaluma City Schools young people. During her tenure, Janine's dedication to her students, her sincere kindness, and her amazing thoughtfulness have cemented her in the hearts of all she has worked with. She will be so very missed by all of us. Jenny Snook began her career at Petaluma City Schools in August of 2005. She was a constant presence through all the iterations of crossroads with her thoughtful consideration, organization skills, and attention to details that helped to ensure our students were cared for. Jenny has cultivated friendships with so many of us and we will miss her very much. Jonathan Knox, thank you for all you gave to the students of Petaluma High over the past couple of decades. Your dedication to drama, film, broadcasting, and literature has always shown through and we appreciate everything you have done to improve student experiences at PHS. Congratulations and best wishes. Robert Figoni, congratulations on your retirement. The teachers and staff at Petaluma High thank you for all your years of taking care of us. We are sure Seeling will miss you more than you will miss it. Best wishes in your future endeavors. Leslie Irig is passionate about teaching and learning and her passion is contagious. Her creativity, integrity, sense of humor, and commitment to student learning has contributed so much to the district over the years and we will miss her greatly. Leslie is a true leader and advocate for kids. We wish you all the joy and adventure that life has to offer in retirement, Leslie. Anne Douglas served as a Full Inclusion Assistant at CASA the last few years and always brought a high degree of integrity and professionalism to her work. Anne was always ready with an incredibly joyful smile and enthusiastic attitude as she did all she could to support her students. We'll miss you Anne. Kim Tay brilliantly served in the English Department at Casa Grande for many wonderful years. She will always be remembered for her gentle spirit, inquisitive mind, and passion for teaching and learning. Thank you Kim for all your years of service. Beth Erdman, Petaluma Junior High School hopes you have a wonderful retirement. Thank you for being a tireless professional and a helpful coworker. You will be remembered for your dedication to your students. We'll miss you. Lori Vayerga has served the Petaluma City Schools District for over 18 years as a cafeteria assistant at Casa Grande High School. Lori has been dedicated and had a commitment to excellence. She is loved by both students and staff. We wish Lori the best in her retirement. Rick Curry, Petaluma Junior High wants to thank you for your work as a math teacher. We appreciate you working to find ways to help students learn the basics so they can be successful. We wish you the best in retirement. Congratulations. Robin Neeland, Petaluma Junior High wants to thank you for touching so many students' lives. Thank you for showing compassion, concern, and care. Your colleagues will miss you, especially your math buddies. Enjoy your retirement.
Well then, I just, I just wanted to say thank you so much to everybody who, who, who gave pictures and feed comment about this incredible group of educators. And thank you in particular to Ashley Cullinwood, who helped put it all together. So thank you, our retirees.
That was impressive. That was good. Thank you. Okay, we are now at comments from the public.
We have three comments tonight.
Okay.
The first one is from Lisa regarding return to school. And she says, "The students should be able to return to school before the pandemic. If Marin can do it, so can we." Our next comment is from Deborah Thomas. And she says, "Please explain how circledup.org program will be incorporated into McKinley School." And our last comment is from Ronnie Sweeney regarding Resolution 1920-38. And Ronnie says, "To whom it may concern, first and foremost, hello and thank you for taking the time to read my concerns and comments. My name is Ronnie Sweeney. I am a mother of a second grader at Pengrove Elementary. I am writing to you on behalf of Resolution 1920-38 of the Board of Education of the Petaluma City Elementary and Joint Union High School Districts, eliminating classified positions effective August 14, 2020, as stated in the June 9th board meeting. I understand that this is a very fluid situation and what may have been discussed in the prior meeting is subject to change at any meeting due to so many unknowns. After listening to the meeting, I am extremely concerned about this motion. This concern made me review the long list of classified employees as stated on the district website. I am assuming that the position of custodian will be saved as they will have a lot of work that needs to be done prior to students returning to school to ensure that it is cleaned and safe. So I won't go into that position at this time. I am pleased to see that the position of librarian was saved last meeting also. However, I am tremendously worried about the reduction of the crossing guard playground supervisor. I understand your concern with them not being needed as they have direct contact with students who will not physically be at school. However, Ms. Tina is far more than that to our school. She is the face our children see the most besides their teacher. It was stated that unless the job description was changed, her position will be terminated until the children return to school, most likely not this year. I am asking for you to review her position and more importantly, her value to our children's mental stability and adjust the job description as needed to keep her gainfully employed. Ms. Tina is more than a yard supervisor. She is our in-person mascot. She has helped many children become comfortable with the school and is someone they all look for. Even my three-year-old son says goodbye and hello to her every time he sees her. During distance learning, she took the time to write a brief note to many students just stating a simple hello and that she missed them. That note meant more to my family than words can describe. She re-motivated my daughter into completing the Zoom meetings and finishing the year out. She almost, she is almost a counselor of some sorts to many children. And when there is so much unknown going on, counseling is a service many still need. I've taken the time to write down some ideas that would help her keep busy. Some ideas include classroom check-in similar to those in which the librarian and PE teacher did. Ms. Tina could also help our teachers with distance learning packets so they can concentrate on teaching. She could do a brief scripted video of what the life skills is and how to apply it. She could help our custodians with classroom prep when children are allowed to return to school safely. She could do explanations of what to expect when children return to school and what recess might look like. She could highlight school rules or playground lunchtime etiquette, which would be extremely helpful for kindergartners, first graders, and new students. I'm sure Mrs. Fideji could probably think of other ways that her services could be utilized. And I feel that her job description could easily be adjusted and her services are very much needed. I've copied her in this email so that she is informed of my concern. I ask that you take time to consider her position at our school as more than just a lead playground supervisor and see her emotional value to our children. Thank you for your time and consideration with this matter. And that is it for the night.
Thank you Michelle. Okay, report on activities and correspondence of school board members. There's not a whole lot for us to do except attend webinars.
Yeah.
Budgeting and opening schools.
Yeah, the SCO update on the budget was one that I went, that I did.
Yes.
Likewise.
Wasn't pretty. Anything else? Okay. Um, moving on to the approval of consent agenda by consolidated motion. I need a...
Oh, I move to approve the consent agenda by consolidated motion.
Thank you. And a second?
A second.
Okay. Thank you. Before we, I have a couple of questions. Those MFT candidates from University of San Francisco, what schools will they be at?
Don't believe we know that yet.
Okay.
Determined. It's, it's, they, they do a determination that there's an interest willingness on both sides and the contract reflect, I mean, allows them to then start their agreement process.
So they, so do schools come to you and say, "We'd like an MFT," and then you let San Francisco know, or?
I don't know Matthew. Do you know the answer to that? I don't know the, I don't know the answer to that Ellen.
Liz, feel free to jump in too, but these are, I believe this is for our interns?
Yes, so we have, what we do essentially is we, it's not if a school comes in request, we try to evenly distribute the amount of guidance coordinators, associates, and interns among the sites based on student population numbers. And so when we know exactly how many interns will be coming from San Francisco State and other places around, then we can place, distribute interns and associates proportionally with, with the school sites. But that part, that matrices hasn't been worked out yet.
And that's all done, that's all done by our guidance coordinator. So our licensed MFTs actually work in conjunction with the school sites to develop kind of what the need is and that we try to fill the need with all the various levels that Liz just mentioned.
And as well as, as well as they need to be supervised, they're getting supervision hours. And so we need to have our lead guidance counselors, MFTs, supervising and overseeing their work. So that also needs to take, be taken into account when we're placing them in different sites.
Yeah, typical of any nonprofit or any agency that does provide counseling for interns. So do we, how many did we have this year?
We had numerous, Maddie. I don't, I don't have the exact number, but we had numerous. And, and to Caitlin's point and Matthew's point, we really do have to manage how many licensed guidance coordinators we have and therefore how many hours they can supervise. And so we're juggling that with, you know what I mean? So we try to fill as many as we can, honestly, because it's a good opportunity that's mutually beneficial for our school sites and for, and for the interns.
Okay, thank you. That answered my questions. Anything else on the consolidated, the consent agenda? Any questions?
We're going to have a lot of good construction happening over the summer, so.
Yes, we have been and will be, will continue to be busy for sure.
Chris, what is the education protection account funds?
That is Prop 30. Do you remember Prop 30 from the Great Recession? So when they passed, when the, when, when we passed Prop 30, it had a requirement that we actually disclose how we spend those Prop 30 funds. If I had my super duper spreadsheets that I know you guys all really miss seeing for the budget, 8012, so 8011 is state aid, 8012 is that education protection money. So the LCFF calculations tell us how much is earmarked from Prop 30 funds. And so this is just part of the disclosure that we have to do every year. We disclose it for the current year, which in this case is 2019-20, and for the budget year, which is 2021. We spend all of that money, 100% of it, on teacher salary benefits.
Oh, okay.
That's on our action agenda, right? It's not our, it's not on our consent.
Consolidated.
Yeah.
Part of action.
It is? Yeah, it's this item eight.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. That was my bad. Well, now I have the answer, so I don't have to ask it when we get there. Thank you Sheldon, for keeping me on top of it. Any other issues, questions about the consent agenda? Okay, let's vote. All in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay, moving right along. We're on business services. Approval of adopted budget for Petaluma City Elementary School and Petaluma Joint Union High School District for 2020-2021 fiscal year and final budget revise number four for 2019-2020.
Final.
Okay, I'm going to attempt to share my 300 slide PowerPoint.
You're so funny, Chris.
I know. Can you guys see it?
Almost, yeah.
There it is.
Okay.
Before she starts, let me, let me make the disclaimer that I, I've had to, I've had to work with Chris this entire last week. You're bringing this crazy drama about, you know, taking place at the legislative level. And while we are pleased that we have some sense of direction now, we were mandated to come forward with a budget and not had, and had to fall on the information that we had at the time, knowing that we're going to have to completely, well, Chris is going to have to completely undo all of this in the next 45 days. And so she has been a trooper in putting together a, I think it's very difficult to put together a budget knowing that it's going to be 100, not 100%, but certainly 60% incorrect and still bring something forward because that's what the law requires us to do. So I'll pass it on to her.
With that, any questions? That's pretty much my PowerPoint presentation in a nutshell. So, I mean, and I appreciate Gary's comments because honestly, I keep, I have gone to Gary on numerous occasions this last several days saying, "How do I present this budget?" And I will tell you, I actually waited to finish all the state reports right up until Thursday, which is like the last moment I could do it, to have it ready and available for inspection because I knew the state legislature and the governor were in a reaching agreement and it was going to change everything and it would be a dramatic, a potentially dramatic change. So of course, come Monday, and they announced they've reached a deal. So I'm going to touch on that. But Gary's also right that we are obligated to present this budget to you for approval with a positive certification, which is what we're recommending. I'm not going to go through all the state reports and all the spreadsheets because obviously they're, at least the revenue portions are now fairly inaccurate. But I do want to just kind of walk you through and touch on it and then really focus on the process that we're going to follow over the next several weeks.
Hey Chris, can I ask a contextual question here?
Yes.
Knowing that what we're about to dive into is already outdated and, and also knowing in the news, you know, about the negotiation, the agreement, the details haven't come out, but it sounds like there's a lot of deferments involved in the agreement. Can you tell us what a deferment does to a academic year budget in terms, you know, in terms of cash flow and the, you know, what this budget that you're presenting shows? You know, what, what is it going to fill and what doesn't it fill because it's a deferment as opposed to an actual payment?
Yeah, no, it's a great question. And if, if you would, if you would allow me to go through my first couple of slides, I'll get to that point and then I'll, I'll take a moment and I'll kind of walk you through with the deferrals, what kind of impacts that we can expect from that.
Okay, thanks.
If that's okay.
Yeah.
I ask one quick thing that I think, so no matter what, we have to adopt this before June 30th, whereas the state government is supposed to adopt their budget by June 30th, but they don't actually get in trouble if they don't.
They don't get paid.
Right, but they get paid peanuts compared to like...
Well, I will tell you, I mean, part of, part of, part of the need for us to adopt a budget for June 30th, as of June 30th, that presented to the County Office of Education, is that we have to do that in order for them to roll our budget forward into an adopted budget status. We cannot, we cannot accept any revenues or do any dispersments, including payroll, without an adopted budget. So that adopted budget really, your action tonight, and, and I don't think in my 20-plus years of doing this, I don't think I've ever explained this to a board because I don't think we've ever had this level of oddity in a budget process. But literally by your action adopting our budget tonight, which I hope you'll do, it, it starts a, several actions that take place, including assigning to the county office, them reviewing it, but they roll our budget into the new fiscal year and put it into an adopted status. That adopted status then allows us to accept deposits, make deposits, and to, and to do dispersments. So without an adopted budget, that becomes really challenging.
Hey Chris, before we start, we, we didn't move this and second it before we started our discussion.
Okay, I'm happy to.
Real quick, I moved to approve.
Second.
Okay, you're on Chris. Thank you.
Okay, so several of these slides you saw at the last meeting, they were based on the preliminary budget. And you can see the total revenues, the total expenditures, and the excess of revenues over expenditures based on this adopted budget and based on the May revise. I highlighted and read what's really going to change when we, when we do our 45-day adjustment, which is the revenue parts. The expenditure pieces are not going to change. I mean, they'll fluctuate throughout the year as, as we do with budget revisions, but there's not going to be any dramatic change to our total expenditures. It's really the revenue piece that is now completely outdated. So I've just kind of... So I've just kind of, I'm gonna walk you through some slides from before and just show you kind of what the change is. This is another slide from last time. See how we had that net change? So the 1920, 2021, 2122, and so on, those are our LCFF calculations based on, you know, ADA and unduplicated pupil count. And then in 2021, here's the big deficit. So here's the big change, where they're giving us some 0.92, we're losing 5.9 million, and then loss of the COLA, which is 1.4 million. So as we go through and talk about what has just come out as the agreement and what we believe will be the final state budget, the net 7.92% deficit goes away, but we still continue to lose the COLA.
So, so that's, that was one of my questions. So they, they're not replacing the COLA. There will still be a zero COLA.
So that's, that's the interesting part, and I think this creates a lot of confusion.
Yeah.
COLA of 2.31%, they have to by statute give it to us in our calculations, but they don't have to fund it. So. That's why you've probably heard the term an unfunded COLA. In the former revenue limit world that, you know, we had for 40-plus years, we would get a deficit factor, basically we'd do all the calculations that would give us the COLA and all this other stuff, and then they'd say, yeah, but we can only fund 92% or 95%. And that was called the deficit factor, a 5% deficit factor, or 6% or 7% deficit factor. But in LCFF world, there, there wasn't a deficit factor contemplating. And so they've actually added that to the LCFF calculation. So now they give us the COLA, but then they basically don't fund the COLA. So it's an effective zero COLA in our funding, but there is a COLA of 2.31%. Is that clear as mud?
Will we ever see it?
How do you account for that, Ben, if it's not funded?
It's in the, it's in the calculations. And so basically, it's kind, it's, it's, it's in net practice or in practicality, it's very similar to, here's what you're entitled to, but here's how much you're gonna get.
Okay.
So it's kind of like that.
Awesome.
And to your question, I think part of it is, as the COLA, hopefully we will eventually see it restored, but there is no guarantee to that. So what changed? Here's the state budget update. And I've never presented a budget backwards, but basically I'm kind of going backwards. I'm showing you, here's the end result. And now let's talk about the state budget update, and then we'll walk through some of the details. So the little opposite than what I'm accustomed to doing, but it seems prudent, given the situation. So June 22nd, yesterday, the state legislature reached an agreement with the governor on the state budget deal. And that is to fund the LCFF at the 2019-20 levels, okay? So that's the unfunded COLA of 2.31. So basically, our funding, if everything stayed the same, we had exactly the same LCFF ADA, exactly the same, we would get the same funding levels. Far greater state deferrals, and this is, I think, the point, Sheldon, you were asking about, what is a state deferral and how does that impact us? And why is that better? And why is it, why is it, why is it a positive and why is it not so positive? So the positive thing about the state deferrals, it helps the state balance their books by saying, we're not gonna recognize $18 billion or whatever it is, this huge amount of money as an expenditure for us as the state, even though we're gonna acknowledge that districts are owed the money. So we're gonna defer payment to districts from what it sounds like is February through June, some periods of time of some percentages. I, I don't have all of those details yet. But their money that they typically give us through what's called the principal apportionment, where they give us a certain percentage of our LCFF calculations every single month, and that's money, cash that we need to make payroll and all the other commitments that we have. They're basically not gonna give us that until several months later into the new year, which would be 21-22. So the good news is for us, it doesn't impact our budget. So it doesn't, it doesn't impact revenue, and it allows the state to fund at the 2019-20 levels the LCFF, even though their budget can't recognize all of that. The challenge it creates for school districts, and for us certainly, we're no different, is that we're not gonna get that cash for several months. And, and so our cash flow, if you, if you look at the state reports that we included under supplemental information, there's a cash flow projection. And so that cash flow projection, if you look at it, in, in April, May, and June, I actually am projecting very little state aid from the state and trying to manage our cash that way. This will increase that lack of money coming in from February, March, April, May, and June. And so we have to make sure that we have an ability to manage our cash. Now, the good news is, without them cutting us that additional 5.9 million, our reserves stay stronger, therefore we have greater liquidity. But we'll be looking at our cash flow very carefully. I was on a Zoom call this morning with the County Office of Education, several of my colleagues, and one of the items we were asking the county office to do is to do the calculations so that they can tell us, here's the percentage that you're actually gonna get under the principal apportionment, so we can work through our cash flow and see what we need to recommend to address that. Did that answer your question, Sheldon?
Yeah, I think so.
Clear as.
So I have a question about that.
Okay.
Um, because I was, I was gonna ask that question also, Sheldon, but I was wondering how that impacts our 21-22 projections? Because it's gonna be so much worse. How do they think they're gonna be able to pay us back? I, I, I don't know. Maybe it's a question that we can't answer right now.
No, it's, it's a great question, Maddie, it really is. I, they did this, they, they used this tool during the Great Recession. They started out with a couple billion, added a couple more billion. I think it was up to at the end about $9 billion that they were deferring from one year to the next. And so then, as the economy recovered at the state level, what they did is they would then say through each, each adoption process for the state budget, okay, we're gonna use some of our new revenues to buy down the deferrals. So then, you know, in one year, we had, we had such a good, I think it might have been 14, 15, or 15, 16, I don't recall, where they, they were able to completely wipe out the rest of the deferrals. So that's what will happen. It'll be much like your savings account, if you have to use your entire savings account, then you slowly build it back up. The state will do the same thing theoretically with the deferrals.
So then there's a good possibility that they'll do the same deferrals that for 21, 22, and 22, 23?
And so on and so forth. You're absolutely right. Yes, those deferrals aren't gonna end in 2021. They're gonna be ongoing, and then they'll probably chip away at them each year as the economy starts to recover.
Got it. Perfect. Thank you.
So this agreement also does do an ADA hold harmless for 2021. So basically, you know, the same ADA that we were funded for in 1920, we can use for 2021. It did add some interesting components. So there's some various criteria that they've embedded to meet the grade span instructional minutes. So they're giving us some flexibility instructional minutes, because you know for every grade span, kinder, first through third, fourth through sixth, seventh, ninth, 12th, they all have their minimum instructional minute requirements that we have to meet. And so in the audit report every year, contemplating whether, whether we met it and, 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 and it's a big deal if we don't meet those instructional minute requirements. That's in addition to the 180 days. So you can meet the 180 days, but below, be below your instructional minutes, or you can meet your instructional minutes, but be below your 180-day minimum. Those are both big deals in a typical year. But they're saying, yeah, you can do that, but we're gonna add some accountability measures in the form of criteria that districts have to, have to meet. And then they further went on to say, and under this accountability, that there's gonna be this learning continuity and attendance plan report that we're gonna have to report out by the end of September to the board, which would probably be the second board meeting in September, talking about, you know, what our plan, our attendance plan and learning continuity plan is. So stay tuned on this one. We're, we're literally, this information is coming out real time. We were reading about this today. I wanted to mention it to you because it, it may inform how we, how we continue to define how we're gonna deliver instruction during COVID-19, because there's a lot, there's a lot of details in here that we're gonna have to look at. And then we're gonna have to report back to you at that board meeting. There's a new funding formula for special education. This is an interesting one, because it looks like there may be more money here, and the question is how much more money? And the reason I say the question is because they're saying, oh, we're increasing it to this amount per pupil. We're gonna give it directly to districts. In other words, right now, we're under the AB602 block route, where they say, okay, as a county sonoma, you get this chunk of money as an entire county. And then the fiscal allocation plans developed by the SOPA and pushed out to the districts under the, the local fiscal allocation plan. AB602 came into effect in about 96, 97, and it completely changed how special education funding worked. It used to be under what was considered the old J-50 model, where you were reimbursed based on a unit, a unit being a classroom. Anyway, this funding formula says it's, it's X number of dollars per pupil count, probably the December 1 pupil count. I don't know if it's duplicated or unduplicated, but each district generates what they, what they're entitled to. Instead of it going to the SOPA, and the SOPA running it through their fiscal allocation plan, and then we're told how much we're entitled to, it would still flow through the SOPA. But the reason I don't know if this is good or bad news is because there are SOPAs that receive more than the state right average and some that receive less. So this may or may not be more money directly for our SOPA overall as a county. We'll just have to see. But it's an interesting concept, and it, it, it could really benefit Petaluma City Schools. So this is one we'll be taking a really close look at. Categorical funds, I didn't find a lot of detail on like the ACES grant and the Adult Education Grant yet. I'm assuming they're gonna be held harmless too, but, but you know what they say, so I don't wanna assume. So we're gonna be going through and defining or leaning out what those details are. This also assumes the federal funding, so, but it's not tying the revenue to federal funding, so that's, that's the good news. Stirs and purrs, there is an employer rate buydown. But again, I'm assuming it's going to be at the same levels that we built into the budget, but these are some of the details that actually could impact our expenditure side. Because if that STIRS rate went slightly up or slightly down, then we would be making adjustments for that. And it also limits authority of LEAs or districts to lay off non-management certificated staff this summer, as well as classified staff in the three areas of nutrition, transportation, and custodial services related to COVID-19. So in other words, any reductions in force related specifically for classified staff, food service, us drivers, or transportation staff and custodial services due to COVID-19, it limits our ability to do that. Okay? Moving forward, okay, there's a 45-day window in statute that we have to revise the budget for any significant variance. So in other words, typically, we, we develop the budget based on the May revise. We don't know what the final state budget's gonna be, but typically, it's pretty close to what the May revise is. And therefore, we don't, we Petaluma have typically not had to do any significant adjustments, because if there are adjustments and they're immaterial, we're not obligated to disclose it. We will in this case, however, we do have a material change. So we're gonna be immediately going into recalculating all of our LCFF calculations and looking at the difference and reconciling our budget to what the new LCFF calculations are in alignment with the state budget. So basically, we have to align our budget with what the final state budget is. We have 45 days to do that. I anticipate that we'll be bringing a budget revision to the board on August 18th. And that will meet the 45-day requirement, which is to have it publicly available for disclosure. It's usually available the Friday before, which is the 14th. So we're, we're within the 45-day window. We'll also make any adjustments for any categorical information as we find them. There are some potential funding sources, the special ed I talked about already, and then there's this whole COVID-19 funds that they've also indicated in the state budget agreement. And so we wanna kind of identify how much is that, what does that look like? What can it be spent on, and then incorporate that into our budget? And the whole point of this is to disclose to the community, to the board, to the public, what the impact is on our general budget of the final state budget. Moving forward, you know, Budget Advisory Committee, we have, we've already established two meetings, June 25th and July 8th. We, we intend on holding those meetings, certainly the June 25th one. The conversation now may be a very different conversation than it was going to be under the budget that we're adopting, because really, we have a lot more time to kind of contemplate what are the potential financial outcomes that the pandemic's gonna have on the state and on our district ultimately. So we're really gonna refocus that conversation on 2021-22. So, you know, I think what, what they finally came to the conclusion of is the July receipts that we've been talking about all along, right? The change in the tax, in the income tax deadline from April 15 to July 15. That was really for 2019 taxes, which is based on a very strong tax year. So I think that the real challenge is going to come next April in anticipation of 21-22, when all of 2020 and the impact on everyone's income, you know, that 13 to 20 some odd percent of people, maybe as high as 30% at some point, all of those people are gonna have an impact on, on their earnings for 2020. And we're gonna have to start planning as a district through this Budget Advisory Committee process to start contemplating, okay, we now need to start preparing for what 21-22 is gonna look like, and kind of how are we going to respond to the potential of budget cuts in that year? We don't know what those might look like, but we can start going through our, our, our programs in our district and trying to identify if we get hit with X number of cuts, here's what we'd recommend for the board. If it's higher than that, maybe we add these items and so on and so forth. So we wanna start that conversation now. We don't wanna delay. But the good news is, we have time to really have a thoughtful process to, to look at data, to look at, you know, the various programs that we have and how we can really, really make some, some modifications. It also buys us time to see, to get us through COVID-19 and to understand what the potential implications, financial implications of COVID-19 are. In other words, if we have a significant impact to our enrollment current year and moving forward, that also could impact our budget, well, either up or down. So really, we're gonna start focusing, focusing on the 2021-22 year and preparing for that, not waiting for the January governor's budget proposal to come out. We really wanna start having that conversation now. Any questions about that?
I have, Chris, I just, you had projected on the multi-year projections expenditures that might happen. And you had said that in 21-22, you could assume reductions in staffing, and it had 3.5 million in certificated and 1.5 million in classified. And you had, you had, you know, a month or so ago, kind of given an idea of what cutting $6.8 million looks like. Could you give, could you give an idea of how many positions that means? And, and then now that I know this, is that what we're looking at? Like, is this, I mean, what was this number based on, I guess? And then with the advisory committee, we would, the committee would be looking at it through this amount? Or is it gonna be maybe more or? But my basic question is, what does that look like? How many positions and staff would that possibly look like? I mean, just approximation.
Well, I actually put it in the criterion standards. I actually showed down in the last three or four pages, made a reduction, announced by a reduction in FTE. So, so keep in mind, we had to put in hypothetical cuts.
Oh, no, I understand that.
And then identify the process that we're gonna use to identify those. So I put in an amount equivalent to keep us basically at zero. There's very little money, revenues over expense in 21-22 and those multi-year projections. And so I think it was like 35 certificated staffers, and that could be management or teachers. And you know what I mean? Certificated is a general term. And then I think there was a numerous amount of classified and unclassified. So, but that was very hypothetical. And the good news is, Maddie, is that my hope is, with the budget deal that they've created today, that that really reflected a worst-case scenario.
Yes.
Giving us a 10% cut.
Yes.
And 7.92 of that has basically been eliminated, which is the good news. So that was based on us losing 10% of our. So that was based on us losing ten percent of our base funding ongoing.
Yeah.
So the real question is, what's the impact of the fight? How quickly do we recover as a state? That's going to be a huge question. And um and then if we do have economic challenges, which I anticipate we're going to, how deep are they going to cut education or to help balance that budget? What are they going to do with that? And so that's kind of a wait and see. I would say at first interim, we're going to have a better idea because we're going to redo our multi-year projections based on the forty five day budget change that we're going to do.
Yeah.
But that two point five, one point five was really a worst case scenario.
Yeah. Thank you. That's, you know, you're amazing.
I've never pulled together multi-year projections like that. That's that's that was shocking.
Yeah.
But it was reflective, it was reflective of the five point five million dollars we have in deficit spending. And it was, it it really highlighted the fact that that was a structural deficit. It created a structural deficit that was ongoing.
Yeah. Thank you.
So this is a slide from last time, too. It's really, um, the next two slides are talking about the impacts of COVID nineteen. As we talked about at the last board meeting, we still have questions about this. How, you know, what what are the impacts? How do we, how do we address COVID nineteen in very practical ways? And then in 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 much more abstract ways when it comes to education, the delivery of education, and what's that going to look like? And and how many staff members are going to be needed to do that? What are the impacts of that? But there's practical ways it impacts us too, like the, you know, buying hand washing stations. And, you know, we're right now, we're looking at purchasing um a bunch of plexiglass stands that we can put on counters. So if you walk into a school office, the person much like another places of business that you've gone into, they have a protection mechanism. They have, you know, a plexiglass thing that you have to walk up to and it provides an added level of protection. So that's all the stuff that we're currently evaluating. Custodial services, food service. You know, I I indicated we were, I would, I was on a call this morning, food service is being dramatically impacted by this. And and, you know, we have like a two million dollar food service program. So if our revenues drop by a significant amount, that has a direct impact on the general fund. We're already making um a significant contribution this year. And we'll be looking at making an even more significant contribution next year, depending on if we can get kids back in school and get them actually buying lunches again. Transportation, student enrollment, these are all things that we're going to be evaluating. So again, the adopted budget, just to be clear, it was based on the gate, the governors may revise. We know that this is now outdated, but this is the budget that we're presenting to you. Our expenditures, this is a slides from last time, these were all still incorporated in, these all still stay. These are on the expenditure side. This was the summary. So in the budget that you're adopting, these, this is the general fund summary of our reserves. And you can see that four point three, just under four point four million dollars. So what what forms are in the adopted budget is all online. We have the comparative spreadsheets, which you guys are all familiar with. We have the certifications, the general fund, Saks reports, or the state reports, all other funds, the supplemental materials, criterion standards, which is about twenty seven pages, has good information. We've included a copy of the dartboard, and of course, by detailed narrative and assumptions. Under the supplemental materials tab, we have our average daily attendance. So if you want to take a look at what was it this year, what are we projecting for next year? That's their statement of capital assets or scheduled long-term debt, the multi-year projections, Maddie, that you were just referring to, lottery report, indirect cost information, the CEA, CEB is the minimum um classroom expense. We far exceed the minimums in both CEAs for nineteen twenty, CEB is for twenty twenty one. Summary of interfund activities, and then our maintenance of effort, which we've got.
Chris, I had a question about the certifications.
Yes.
There were a number of them that weren't met. Can you walk us through those or give us a general overview of why?
In the criterion standards, it, so those those that were not met, that comes directly out of the criterion standards. So under that, under that certification, all of those checkmarks is. So if you look in the criterion standards, I give descriptions for each one of them. But mostly, they're related to COVID nineteen, mo, I mean, to the impact of the state budget. So your revenues dropped significantly out of the norm. Can you explain that? You know what I mean? Your your ADA is different. Can you explain that? So we we basically go through and explain all of those variances in the um twenty seven pages of that criterion standards. If you have a specific one that you're referring to, I'm happy to try to explain a specific one.
No, I was just concerned, just because it says a lot of them weren't met.
Yeah, it's typical that.
Just take the first one or two that ADA, it's saying not met.
So that's a great question. So on the ADA, um, in prior years, we took students that were typically outside of the abortion window in TK. This would be much more cautious about that. So we actually increased what we think our attendance ratios are going to be because we have more students that would be generating a hundred percent of portionment, which is students that don't. So that that's an example of a variance in our attendance account, in our attendance. So what's another one? That was an ADA variance, by the way.
For the reserves. Sorry, Sheldon, did you have one?
No, I was just saying the next one is enrollment. Uh I had the same, I always had the same question as Joanna, yeah.
Or even number ten for reserves, can you?
Yeah, that's 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 losing five point five, that's losing all of that money and eating away our reserves. So the fact that our reserves dropped from close to ten million to four point four million, it's saying, whoa, whoa, that's out of the norm. What are you doing? So that's that's an example of a variance. It's it's that extreme drop.
So these are basically like something outside of the norm that we typically see in a year. These are all of these not met.
Yeah, so if you, if you look at the criterion standards, what it typically does is it goes back over four years and it says, here's your norm. Your norm is that your contribution to special education changes one percent, but this year it changed more than one percent. Can you explain why? Or if it changed less than one percent, then it's all good. So it basically looks at trend analysis of of how our budget has worked over X number of years. And it says, if something's outside of the percentage of typical change, then we have to explain it. So with our revenues dropping so dramatically, we definitely started operating outside of that those norms.
Basically, it's a big check and balance.
There is a lot of good information in that criterion standards, though. So if you have a specific one, and I think, and I can't remember, but you can actually go through and try to find that and my explanation of why there was that variance. So I give a little summary of why it's out of the norm. So for example, when it's looking at um expenditures, you know, we budget in nineteen twenty, we have all this carryover budgeted in our categoricals. And then the adopted budget, there's no carryover budgeted. And so our expenditures by category will drop nineteen twenty to twenty twenty one because our categorical carryover is not in the adopted budget, whereas it was in nineteen twenty. So we just explain that. That variance happens every single year. So that's more of a typical variance that we see. And then in twenty one, twenty two, twenty two, twenty three, there's no variances because then it's kind of equalized. But thank you for looking at it. I mean, that's great. I mean, I.
And then, and this document is a part of the budget that we submit to the county office and and they and they consider as they think about our our rating as qualified.
Yes, they go through that criterion standards line by line.
Okay.
Take a look at variances. ADA, for example, is a really good one. What they're trying to say is, did I project way too much ADA? And therefore, our revenues are overstated. That's what, that's what the criterion standards is trying to to identify and to say, and to flag me frankly, or the board, as you're looking at it now, to say, hey, there's something that's way out of whack here. What is it? Other questions?
Uh I'm, uh, I I can't stop thinking about the fact that this is going to be moot in a little uh in a little bit, in the next several days um and weeks. But um, so the the reserves of the four plus million dollars, is is that available to us for the cash flow deficits between now and February? When the deferrals, some of the deferrals start trickling in?
Good question.
So, um, yes, I mean, basically, this four point four million, four three seven nine that I pulled up, when I bring that budget revision in August, this is going to go up dramatically. And these, this four point four is going to go up closer to a total ending fund balance of, you know, eight million because, or nine million, because we're not losing that significant seven point nine two percent of our revenue. So when that goes up, then um it is like our savings account. And so it is, like I said, it's not exactly tied to cash because we have a lot of receivables and payables. But proportionally, cash is related to it. And so the higher our reserves are, generally speaking, the higher, the greater amount of liquidity we have with our cash. So we're also going to be looking at, as we contemplate our cash flow, whether or not we need to recommend a tan or a tran, a tax rep, tax revenue anticipation note. You know, that's where the county actually will allow us to go negative in our funds, based on a certain percentage of our LCFF calculations, et cetera. And we can do that pretty readily and bring that to you anytime in the next month or so. And then there's what's called um a tran, the tax revenue anticipation note, where we actually go on and do a financing, where you're actually, it's it's like a short-term loan. And there's all sorts of um criteria associated with it, and we'd have to take it to do. And I've done many of those over the years.
What kind of interest do they charge on those?
It just depends. It depends on our our rating. It depends on our budget size. It depends on our reserves. It depends on a lot of stuff. It depends on the interest rates right now. And we actually generate interest, so they give us a loan of X number of millions. We're generating interest, then we're paying interest, right? So it's sitting in our bank account and we're generating interest. The question is, the amount of interest we're generating, how's that compared to the amount of interest we're paying? And so you can't do some, you know, you can't, you can't, you're not supposed to use it as a money-making deal. That's not what it's intended to be for, but you want to try to break even. The challenge is with interest rates so low, it's hard to break even in this type of environment. Because even the cashing county treasurer is not, you know, in Marine County, back in the, in the first part of the twenty first century, we were generating five percent on our cash, cashing county treasury. Now it's probably one and a half to two percent if we're lucky. And so if you're paying a tran and you're paying three percent, then all of a sudden, the cost of the financing starts hitting the budget. And that's where you have to be careful.
But then can we, we use the deferral, the deferred money to pay off the tran?
No, it doesn't work that way. It doesn't, in fact, it has to be paid off by the end of April. That's the true problem. Because it's sure, burning, when they're deferring May and June, a tran doesn't work because it's it's usually paid off by April. Balance is repaid. So these are all things we're going to be contemplating. There's, you know, I'm I'm, I have a lot of confidence that we will be able to come up with a plan to manage our cash. Other questions?
Okay, it's time to vote. All in favor of um accepting the final budget revised for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty?
Hi.
Bye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, moving on. Approval of resolution nineteen twenty, just forty one of the Board of Education, determining the use of education protection account funds for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty for Pedaluma City Elementary, Pen Grove Charter, and Sixth Grade Academy at Pedaluma Junior High. It's not there. There is no Sixth Grade Academy.
So again, we're reporting on two thousand nineteen, twenty.
Okay.
So the first set are nineteen twenty, and then in twenty twenty one, you'll see that Gateway to College and Sixth Grade Academy are not there.
Okay.
I move to accept eight point one point two approval of resolution nineteen twenty forty one.
A second. All in favor, or questions?
Yeah, um, quick question. So what happens to the carryover on the positive balances on Sixth Grade Academy and and Gateway who don't exist anymore?
And rise.
And right, well, this isn't one of these.
Rise isn't a charter, so it's just, it's just Gateway to College and.
Okay.
So the district owns that, so we'll be working on how do we account for that? Do we transfer it to our general fund? So we'll be working through that, but it's all part of our general fund, and so it will.
It doesn't disappear.
It does not disappear. And, you know, Gary and I had these conversations early on when I first got here, and there were commerce, lots of conversation around great Gateway to College. And I know that Dr. Harrington, in one of our meetings, I think one of our neighborhood districts, I'm not sure which, had closed a charter mid-year and learned a really hard lesson that when you close a charter mid-year, you do pay back a bunch of money. But when you close it at the end of a fiscal year, like we are, then that you you safeguard that carryover. So we were very prudent with how we recommended that.
Any other questions before we vote? Okay, all in favor, I opposed. Okay, moving on. Eight point one point three approval of res- of resolution nineteen twenty dash forty two of the Board of Education of the Pedaluma City Elementary School District of the County of Sonoma, determining the use of education protection account funds for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one for Pedaluma City Elementary School District and Pen Grove Charter School.
So you can see how Sixth Grade Academy went away.
Yes, I see.
I so move to approve resolution nineteen twenty four twenty two.
Second. You? Comments, questions before we vote? All in favor, I opposed. Okay, eight point one point four approval of resolution nineteen twenty dash forty three, determining the use of education protection account funds for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, Pedaluma Joint Union High School District, Mary Collins Charter, Giltry Valley, PAX, and Gateway to College.
To approve.
A second. Questions, comments? All in favor? Opposed? Okay. Eight point one point five approval of resolution nineteen twenty dash forty four of the Board of Education, the Pedaluma Junior High School District, determining the use of education protection account funds for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, Pedaluma Joint Union High School District, Mary Collins Charter School, Cherry Valley, and Pedaluma Accelerated Charter School.
Move to approve. Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor? I opposed. Okay, eight point one point six approval of resolution nineteen twenty dash forty five of the Board of Education, appointment of member and alternate, alternate, although alternate to Redwood Empire Schools Insurance Group.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Questions? Questions, comments? All in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed. Okay, eight point one point seven approval of resolution nineteen twenty dash forty six of the Board of Education of the Pedaluma City Elementary and Pedaluma Joint Union High School Districts to authorize designated personnel to sign contract and agreement documents for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one.
I'll second.
Okay, all in, uh, questions, comments? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Okay, moving right along. Eight point one point eight approval of resolution nineteen twenty dash forty seven of the Board of Education at the Pedaluma City Elementary School District, accepting title to portable classroom building at McDowell Elementary School site from Sonoma County Superintendent of Schools and approving related agreements.
I so uh move to approve.
No, I'll second.
Questions?
I did have one, I just had a, I just had a clarification or or anyway, not a question really, but well, I guess it is a question. Is it really being sold to us for one dollar?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a great deal.
Wanted to unload it, right?
Well, actually, it's a great deal for them.
Yeah.
Their alternative was to demolish, pay for the building to be demolished, removed, and returned, restored to its original site, the site to its original. So, yeah, it's actually a great deal for them, but.
That's what I wanted to ask about. That's what I wanted to ask about, you know, our intentions with this because this is the building that is directly across from the contested gas station. And it is a portable building and it's a dilapidated portable building or one that is at least at the end of its lifeline. So what, what's our intent? Is it to, to restore it where it is, to move it, or what?
So it's, yeah, I appreciate the question. It's, I think the site is dilapidated. I don't think the building is. We had that, we had structural engineers actually come out. We opened walls, opened ceiling, you know, small sections and have structural engineer assess the building. It was built in nineteen sixty nine. It's really not a portable. It's more of a modular. I mean, it's likened to a portable, but it's not a permanent foundation.
Okay.
So we believe it's got a stainless steel, commercial kitchen in it. It's got restrooms that are set up for preschool. So the intent is to operate it as a preschool building and four Cs, who I'm sure you've all heard of, they're, they have a phenomenal program. And they have been operating in there for some time. It's, it's been vacant for about a year and a half. So they are very interested in partnering with us to, to open a preschool program and we received a preschool special education grant of about a million dollars, approximately six hundred thousand of that is earmarked for facilities improvements. We would have to make a match. We would use some capital reserve funds to do that, to really go in and clean up the building, freshen it up, you know, make, you know, new carpet, new, new, new finishes, et cetera. A lot of it's going to be site work, you know, dealing with the play structure, making it ADA accessible, rethinking the drop off. That's the most important thing because under the former administration here in Petaluma City Schools, for some reason, they would not allow four Cs to use the parking lot that North Bay Children's Center uses, which is attached to McDowell School. I don't know why. So they would drop off, as you know, on a very busy intersection of Maria and McDowell, right across from what was Esau's or what I knew was Happy State, where I, I was a wait high school, by the way. So we would rethink that and we would probably do some parking lot configuration changes to create a safe drop off at the north end of that parking lot. And they would share it with North Bay Children's Center and make it ADA accessible. So, so that's kind of the intent. We have a grant. The goal is for pre, special education preschool students to then be having mainstream opportunities to actually be in a preschool program with students that don't have special needs. And so that's really the beauty of this program and this grant.
Yes, we get
The perfect building.
We get a lot more out of this than, than the cost associated after putting the grant into the mix. I mean, this is, this is really a a cutting edge plan that was put together when it was, when it was scored by the state. It received one of the highest scores in all of the state. For, we received, we were one of the very few programs that received full funding. And so this is, this is a, a collaboration with our South County Consortium and with our regular population and really trying to put together a model program to show how you can have, have unique needs, but you can thrive together in a preschool setting. And hopefully that'll jumpstart their, their movement into, into the TK through, you know, sixth setting.
So we're going to move very quickly. I mean, having, taking ownership because we really couldn't work on the building if we didn't own it. We're kind of going on them a little bit. We've, we've already talked with our architects, but we want to move quickly into design, working with four Cs and working with South County and get this project because we'd like to get this, this program up and running in fall of two thousand twenty one if possible. So anyway, we're pretty excited about it. And also it's going to really clean up that corner because it's really the weeds and the disrepair and, you know, the dilapidated, the dilapidated nature of that facility is really the site stuff that's going on.
Yeah.
And it definitely needs freshing up. There's no doubt. And just to answer your question related to what the project that may go on across the street. We haven't heard anything about that, no updates. And we would design the behind the building to be the primary play area for students. Not in front of the building, which is a lot smaller, so.
Any other questions, comments?
That's great.
Yeah, it sounds wonderful. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, eight point one point nine approval of resolution nineteen twenty dash forty eight of the Board of Education, the Petaluma Joint Union High School District, authorizing the Petaluma High School and Casa Grande High School classes of twenty twenty Associated Student Body Funds to carry over and spend by July thirty first, twenty twenty one.
This is a really just a procedural thing that obviously their, their year was, their year was cut short. And typically, class, class associated student bodies have monies that they're going to be expending for a variety of different events. And sometimes they're give a class gifts and it gives them another year to determine what they, how they want to spend those dollars. It is their money to spend, how they, they see fit. This is really more a transparency resolution that we're aware there's dollars out there. Nobody's taking that money and, and spending it in another way. And they, they do have another, a year to do that. If, if that year ends, then it would go back into the general student body account. And that student body would, would, would distribute it as they deemed appropriate.
Need to move this?
Move to approve.
Second? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, educational services, eight point two point one. Approval of Petaluma City Elementary COVID nineteen operations written report.
I move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eight point two point two approval of the Petaluma Joint Union High COVID nineteen operations written report.
Move to approve.
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, eight point two point three approval of the Mary Collins Charter School at Cherry Valley COVID nineteen operations written report.
Move to approve.
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, approval of the Pen Grove Elementary COVID nineteen operations written report.
Move to approve.
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor? I opposed? Okay, eight point two point five approval of the Petaluma Accelerated Charge School COVID nineteen operations written report.
I move to approve eight point two point five, eight point two point six, and eight point two point seven.
Can we vote on all three at the same time?
Yeah. Sure.
I don't know. Roberts rules?
Sir.
I think we can't.
I have in the past.
Okay, all in favor of eight point two point five, eight point two point six, and eight point two point seven operations, COVID nineteen operations written report for Gateway to College, Sixth Grade Academy, and PAX.
Aye.
I opposed? All right. Now we're onto student services, eight point three point one approval of the newly revised SELPA local plan.
So this is also another procedural step. All of the districts, the forty districts in Sonoma County need to take this to their boards for approval. The plan has been updated to reflect the new requirements for the SELPA. We've added some pieces for some protections for us as a SELPA. But it's generally the same document, governance and administration document, but we, we all do have to bring it back to our SELPA, to our local boards.
There's a school with eight kids?
Yes. Hasha?
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh my God, where are they?
Um. They are nor, I think like in northwest, I believe, up toward. Yeah.
Very rural.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, did we move this?
Yeah.
I, oh, go ahead. Sheldon, you go.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll move to approve the, the SELPA plan, S- SELPA local plan.
Second?
Second?
Questions, comment?
Yeah, I really actually appreciated reading this because this is still a foggy part of our district operations to me. And so I really appreciate actually learning about our SELPA. Gary, can you explain to me the relationship between this board and SELPA and SELPA and the South County Consortium? Just to explain it to me because I'm so foggy.
So the relationship really is that we have a SELPA, we have a SELPA executive committee. And the way that the SELPA is set up is by enroll, region representation. And so in our region, we are represented by an elementary district and the high, and a high school district. So by default, we're the, we're the high school district. And Liberty represents, Chris Raffinelli represents the, the, the elementary district. And of the regions, I believe there are six of them. There are, everybody has a one vote, one per region. And we represent the interests of our area. And so when I go, I represent all pretty much of, of Petaluma, Greater Petaluma and the districts around. Arona Park has its, is, represents itself. Santa Rosa has two votes and so on. And so the rep, the relationship between the SELPA and the board.
Is there one? I mean, doesn't it sound like it?
There really isn't one. It's really more I, the, I'm the conduit between the SELPA and, and the board. The relationship between the Petaluma schools in the SELPA are, we have, we've been a little, a bit more, I don't know if aggressive is the right word, but bit more aggressive in our expectations from the SELPA, this, that there, there was in previous. It felt like much like, I think Petaluma feels as being very far from the county seat of Santa Rosa. The farther you are from the epicenter, the less services you're receiving. The SELPA provides quite a bit of services to the small school districts. Because they don't have a director like Molly, they don't, or Melinda. They don't have the economies of scale that we have. So we are not as reliant on the SELPA. So we've, we've been exploring ways about how the SELPA could help us because our needs are not the same as, as.
Hasha's.
So the plan, part of the plan was, one of the things that, that took place, a part of this plan was acknowledgement in here. We changed some of the voting in here to, to recognize that Santa Rosa didn't really feel like they were being adequately represented, given, given the fact that they're by, by by far the largest school district yet, had not quite the same representative vote. And so we made a slight adjustment to make it more representative. So it's a really good working group. You know, the goal is for us to pool our services as much as possible when it's cost efficient to do that. Things are changing now. It's becoming less and less cost efficient to pool our services to go to SCO primarily because of the, the escalating costs associated with, with health and welfare and step and, step and column. And so we're much more moving towards that consortium model. And the SELPA is, is our, our lead liaison to the SELPA is Molly, our director and Melinda. And they're the ones that will utilize the services of the SELPA the most. We try to utilize the SELPA services, the SELPA director services before we go out to our own legal counsel as much as possible. And we use them for a variety of different mediation services.
The South County Consortium have a board?
Yes.
So do they have to vote on this as well? Oh, you are?
I'm a board member on the South County Consortium. And, and yes. So by default, on, on this, as those districts will, all those districts will vote in their own home districts.
Well, and I think, Gary, South County is considered
Us.
School of ours.
We're considered, by our voting on this, we, we essentially vote for South County Consortium. Because it's our LEA.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed you. Sheldon, I, I was, I'm always confused about SELPA.
Okay, discussion information, student services, updates on future business. Does that have to do with reopening?
Yeah, we actually have a few things. It's kind of a grab bag update. One of the items that we wanted to, we, we'll, we'll get into the reopening, but I want to kind of go over first the, there was a discussion at the last board meeting regarding future use of SROs, School Resource Officers. I happened to notice, and actually Caitlin sent it to me today. There was a very interesting article in Politico. I'm just going to do a quick read on it. Mid-national calls for police reform, the California Budget Deal announced Monday will spur the state and local leaders to consider, reconsider whether to keep law enforcement on school campuses. According to documents obtained by Politico, Gavin Newsom and legislature will evaluate the presence of officers on campus and identify alternatives to ensure student safety. The budget language also calls for a youth task force on the issue. And it goes on to a little bit more detail. But as you are aware, we, we have, we have not been using school resource officers since we, we, we broke that relationship, or actually, really, they broke that relationship with us in the late winter. And our grant ended. Nor, nor do we have an intent to, to bring back school resource, the school resource officer position. But, but there was, I believe there was a general sense that, and I'm, I'm kind of pushing it back now to the board for, for, for some clarity, that the board wanted to bring some type of a resolution forward regarding school resource officers. I need a little direction on that one.
I don't want cops on campus. I don't. I already wrote the resolution, fam, so we just got to know if you.
There's a, there's a distinction though, I think, between policing campuses versus having police as resources. So I mean, I, what, I, how would you describe an SRO, you know, job when, when they were on our campuses?
Um, yeah.
You know, I think that's always been the issue is that it, it's presented as one thing, but in reality, it's very different. And so they've tried it in different iterations over the years. When I was working at Casa's in the Career Center, it, it was one of the first, it was the first grant that they got. And Danny Miller was the, the SRO. And I think he was there five years, four or five years. And, you know, it, in some ways, it was, it was kind of like benign from my point of view, but then I've come to find out it wasn't benign. And, and I think it was just not necessarily Danny. It was just having a policeman on campus. I think one of the things that worked a lot better in terms of kind of helping disparate groups not, you know, fight each other and have fights during, you know, lunch and, and tutorial, were the campus supervisors and they were trained and they, they were great and they had great relationships with, with the kids. And you know, did you agree, Caitlin, that it was kind of?
A hundred percent. I, I mean, I know that for part of my time there, there were SROs, but it was always folks like Pam and the other campus supervisors that were stepping in and that it's actually new.
You know, and so they could, they kind of made deals with, you know, the groups of kids that, you know, you know, they kind of, what they, what their focus was, was to make the campus a safe place for everybody, for all students. And so they would talk to the leaders of these various groups, you know, all kinds of groups and, and kind of make that an unofficial kind of way of dealing with things. So when things became a problem, huh?
This is the pub, right, Maddie? It was the
This is the pub, right, Maddie, it was the?
It wasn't. I mean, I'm sure that he was, he was part of that. But my, my recollection really was more that the campus supervisors had a lot more to do with things. Because they were there all the time and they were always out on the campus. And I would prefer, I, I.
Yeah.
Having a police officer with, you know, everything.
Yeah, the, the, the School Resource Officer position did not, did not, that, that Dave Rose wrote in the Department of Justice grant, did not come to fruition in any way, shape or form in the way that we had hoped it would. It was, it was just, it was snake bit from the very beginning. Just even just staffing it. It was, it was never really fully, fully staffed. And, you know, it's, I think that, you know, moving forward, I, one thing I want to make very clear is that we don't have any intention of looking at, at, at doing any kind of a replacement model related to this. However, it's probably a good idea that we do a little bit of a study session on it. And it's, and how we do utilize school police or city police or, or county police officers. How do our administrators utilize them? I think that would probably be a really, really good thing for us to do. And bring our administrators, you know, when do police come on campus? Why do they, when, what are, what are the types of reasons they come? And maybe explore some of that, because I think there's that, there's nothing that is, there's nothing but positive that can come from us all getting some knowledge on that. And I think this is a really inappropriate time to do that, especially because I think we're, we're very, I think all of us are very, very concerned about, you know, what message that sends when somebody comes in uniform onto a campus, given, given everything that, that we're seeing taking place around the country.
The only thing I want to add is that with campus supervisors and folks like that, you know, they're accountable to the district. Whereas at the end of the day, the SROs are employed by PPV. And what, what oversight is happening there? I ask you. If anyone has it, you can email it to me. I would love to know.
I, you know, it would be great to talk to the administrator. Do they use them at games? Night games where there might, you know, so I, I.
How about if I ask them to come to the July meeting and we'll do a study session? I mean, it will, it'll be part of the meeting, but we can do a specific.
We also have the lead counselors come as well, because I know that we would have to call them at certain times.
Yeah, counselors are a huge part of this conversation. Yeah.
What we can do is we'll, let me see if we can get them there in that July meeting. And we may be problematic. We might have to do it that first meeting in August.
Special studies.
We don't have any, we don't have any contracted services that we are, we are going to approve related to the Police Department or the, or the Sheriff's Department. Nor do we typically, so. Does that sound good? We'll bring that for a study session?
Yeah.
And then if you guys decide what you want to do as a resolution based on the information there, then we, then we have a logical step forward.
Okay.
Okay. Um, oh, so, so related to reopening. So we wanted to give, we wanted to give you an up, kind of a progress update related to reopening. So we're going to do that in, in two parts. The first part, I'm going to ask Cliff, I think Jason's on the call to, on the Zoom as well. Cliff and Jason are going to talk about what's going on in the committee work. And then Liz is going to talk a little bit about the audit that they did from the parents and some of the data that, that was gathered from that. So I'll pass it to Ed Service.
And Liz, could you also talk about mental health services or anything like that that's part of the discussion?
Sheldon, I think you're going to have to unmute Cliff.
I don't even see him.
About now.
We can hear you.
And Jason.
You gotta carry one of these.
Never know. Well, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Jason start. He, he sent out an update yesterday. It was pretty succinct of our work so far. And then I'll add my two cents after he's done.
Okay, so we did, can you hear me? Okay, I have a suspect microphone, so I'm glad it's working. So we did send out an update just the other day to our teachers, and I think that most of you on the board saw a copy of that. So the work is, as we mentioned before, the work is immense and slow, but it's productive. So we're making forward strides. I think the, the biggest newest updates are the three that were mentioned in the update that, one, we have, as our subcommittees have done a lot of work. Our Tools Committee has identified required tools that we want all students to have access to in their classrooms at different grade levels. We have been looking at a, at a district-wide communication tool to strengthen our communication between our district site and classrooms, back and forth with our parents. And then we also have been working on schedules. And elementary is, is finalizing a draft of their distance learning schedule. And secondary is not far behind in that. We're, we're now at the part where we're doing, you following the accordion process. So this week, we will be sharing out some of this information to all of our certificated staff to get their input. And their input comes back to our distance learning committee. And they take that input into account and weigh it, see if we need to make any revisions. And then that committee would, would make final decisions on the different issues that we're bringing forward.
So is there a timeframe on that?
I'm sorry, say that again?
I, I was just wondering about the timeframe on the accordion. I mean, I mean, do you have a census of like a couple of weeks? Is it?
Well, no, that's a great question. No, we're looking at, we're looking at, we had hoped to get some of that stuff out today. And we have a little bit more work, so we're hoping to get it out tomorrow to our teachers. And then it'll be, we'll see what the response is. You know, it could be very quick or at the latest, the beginning of next week. So we're giving teachers a chance to respond, but also we can't wait too long. Because Penn Grove and Chervalli are starting and those teachers are feeling frantic.
Yeah.
There's, there's many other kind of irons in the fire. Like, there's a lot of other decisions we're working on and we have a lot more work to do. So we're, we're according, using the accordion process as things take shape. So we're sending some stuff out, get it back, finalize it, and then we're sending different stuff out. So we're continually working and just taking one step at a time, trying to get through all of the challenges that we have to overcome and all of the processes that we have to figure out.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to add, you know, when we started this work, there was, well, I mean, at every meeting, there's a sense of urgency. Yet, you know, we've met 12, 13 times now with our whole group and our, our, our small groups. And we have meetings scheduled basically every day in some shape or form through July 2nd. So we've kind of mapped out, that's when we're hoping to kind of tie this in a bow and have stuff ready to, to share with the, the year-round schools. But similar to what, what Chris experienced with the budget. So there's a trailer bill that, that's coming out with the budget that has additional information about distance learning requirements, about in-person learning requirements, about instructional minutes. So a lot of the things that we've been discussing and kind of working on, you know, some things will need to be adjusted, some things are going to fit right in. But it's 170 pages long in a PDF. And we've just, I mean, this came out this afternoon. So just, just barely getting our hands on it to try to figure out what we may need to adjust. But a lot of this just comes down to our, our state and our local, you know, county public health officials, depending on what phase we're in, depending on what they'll allow us to do. So we're, we're going to be following that guidance, plus, you know, scouring this bill for, for more information. And just, in just a glance at a couple of executive summaries that a couple of professional organizations have put out, we're right in alignment with a lot of it. With some other stuff, we've been waiting for clarification. Like, there is guidance on instructional minutes. There are requirements on instructional minutes. There is guidance on attendance, right? There's, there's pieces that we've been waiting. There's guidance on, you know, participation and what distance learning is and what it isn't, and what instruction is and what it isn't. So we're, we're going to tackle that and try to tie this all up as soon as possible and get our plan going forward. But we've had, you know, a large group, 56-plus people, lots of great insight. This was, I think Jason might have mentioned it last, last meeting when I was gone. But this is the first committee I've been a part of where we've had to turn away people. Just because, I mean, the Zoom meeting after 56 was just, was just a little crazy. So lots of interest, obviously, this is a, you know, a topic of high, you know, relevance and intrigue by everyone. So making some good progress and we've been checking in with our county counterparts and just kind of gauging where everyone is. But I think we're on a, we're on a good path, a good trajectory. We've got a good plan in place. And then we're working on it to finish it up.
And Liz is?
Oh, go ahead, Gary.
So Liz is going to show the little bit of the, of the, what did, what did our parents, how did our parents respond?
This is the overall survey data. You can see we have, we captured a ton of information. I mean, a huge kudos to David Fischer, Ryan Wong, and Ashley Collingwood for their support with this. But you can see, if you look at the bottom of the screen along each of these tabs, we have individual site data that we've also shared, you know, with principals that has comments and, and parent kind of feedback and, and interest based on the audit that we ran. So we had a total, there's a total of 8,693 students in Ares. We don't have that many in the district. That's because that included the outgoing senior class and some of the students who are incoming that have already been rolled, rolled into Ares. And so, you know, that's about 1,000 over what we actually have for our students next year. And of that group, we had 6,495 responses, which is just an amazing response rate, given we have about 7,500. So, I mean, we did push it out a lot, you know, a lot of phone calls and reminders. But again, kudos to all the families and thank you to all the families who responded and participated. From that, here is what we learned. We first broke it down by school, preferred model by school. And then if you look down all the schools there, you can see that we had about 20, oh, I'm sorry, about 80% of students that were most interested in school-based learning, which means the parents were responding. If you were to open up schools now, I would send my student back. You know, we're, we're ready to be back. We're ready to be back physically in the building.
That's great. Completely, like six hours a day?
So, so the way it was presented is that if it opened up, it would open up as a hybrid where, you, you know, there would be a limited amount of students in the room. So not just, you know, back to 32 students in the room. That's what that was in response to. But yes, they would, you know, trust the safety protocols to, to allow their students to physically come back to campus in that hybrid model, is what that was responding to. 13% said that they would prefer to have distance learning, which means that full-time, they don't want to be physically back in a building for safety concerns and other concerns. And so they would like to continue with the model of distance learning that we did this spring, where they just were full-time at home, learning on, online. And 8% of our student respondents said they would be interested in doing independent study. So that means that it's a little bit, it, it's still very self-paced. Teachers would come up with about a packet, would check in with students for one hour a week. But other than that, the students would just take the work and independently complete, complete them on their own. And then once a week, the teacher would check in for an hour just to make sure the work got completed, see if there's any questions, give you great assignments, give credit. And then it goes along with that model, just like the Valley Oaks model.
It's really more like 3%, though, because it's Valley Oaks skews that whole number. So just.
Well, the median is probably closer to look at, you know, 85, 12, 3 is what, what we're looking at. And yes, Ellen, exactly, like the Valley Oaks model.
I have a quick question. So if, if we have students that don't want to come back, 12%, 13%, can we do, can we offer those students distance learning? And the students that want to come back to some sort of a hybrid, we can offer that to them? I mean, do, is that what I'm asking?
So, Ellen?
Yeah.
Yeah, let me, let me jump in here. So in, in the bill that's yet to officially go through, that, that is going to limit this a little bit.
Okay.
So in, in the bill, it says that we may offer distance learning if one of two conditions is met. So one is if the state or public county health officials, you know, don't allow us to meet in person. Or two, if a student is in a medic, is a medically fragile student or has been exposed to COVID. So in just the first pass, we may not be able to give distance learning as a choice if those are the requirements. So we, we will see. And then, you know, this, when we did this audit, you know, obviously, we've been planning for what distance would look like in the next version, which is still in development. So, you know, this was off of what parents and students' experience was in the last version of, of distance learning. So.
There's an.
But more to, more to come.
Yeah, there's an expectation that, that what we're hearing based on the trailer language is there will be another iteration of that that will be coming out. There, at least we're anticipating. This is their first, I guess, first blush on it.
Okay.
What they basically do, very, very common with trailer language, is they will send, they will set, because, because they don't do a lot of consultation necessarily with educational institutions. So they will pass a language and then it'll go out and get churned around. And some of the concerns we'll get, will be shared and then, kind of like an accordion process. But, and then they'll come back and they'll make some adjustments. So we think there might be some adjustments related to, to an independent study cap and related to distance learning, but we don't know. It's like, again, we, we're plowing through it and we're gonna, we're gonna follow it as much as we can until we hear otherwise. But yeah, there's, there, there are some options out there.
Okay.
And if you look at that median row again, the 85, 12, 3 or 84, 12, 3, we then broke it down by grade level. And you can see, you know, more of the independent study interest was at the higher grade levels, which makes more sense. You know, it's hard, it'd be harder for, you know, some of the younger grade levels to take a packet and go away for a week. Although there are parents who've mentioned that they're interested in homeschooling. And this presents kind of that perfect balance of them being able to, you know, homeschool in a way while still being under an accredited institution and still being under the district of where we can kind of guide and give grade and, and, you know, support the parents in any kind of schooling at home that they want to do through an independent study program. So you'll see that sometimes among the very younger ages, too, parents have opted for that.
And they would still be our students.
They would still be our students, exactly.
So all that we have done is, what, our, our goal was the detail work related to what distance learning is going to look like. That's, that's, that's all been done through, through committee work. What we wanted to find out was where were our parents as best we could gather in June with their thoughts about coming back to school? Knowing that there's a lot of details that needed to be filled in. Because nobody is committed, there isn't one parent that is committed or that we have committed to a particular pathway. That's all going to get fleshed out. They're going to see exactly what it's going to look like in the next iteration. And then, then there'll be some decisions that will need, need to be made by families. Cliff's referencing, there may be fewer decisions that are on the table, but that's yet to be seen. So we're going to kind of still work through, we're trying to stay true to the process. Let's work through and really can develop out what does, what does a hybrid model look like? What does distance learning look like? Let's get them out there. Let's get some agreements on it. We've been working hard with, with the Petaluma Federation of Teachers. We've been working hard with CSEA. We did some great logistics meeting last week where we started talking about all of the challenges just associated with just opening up school. Need to do that. Folks have been great. It's kind of all hands on deck. And we will come with a plan for the board to look at and ask lots of questions about. We're hoping that that's going to be sooner rather than later. The trailer bill threw us off a little bit because there's some, a little bit more, maybe. The trailer bill threw us off a little bit cuz there's some, a little bit more, maybe some more restrictive language than we thought. But we have to go through that and we'll also be speaking with legal too. As they, they're, everybody's chiming in with their analysis of the trailer bill. But it's, it's a beast to look at. And you can certainly go online and look at all of the hundreds some odd pages. But we'll give you an update as we, as we continue through.
Okay. So I have a couple of questions. One is, um, the county superintendent, Dr. Harrington came out with a front-page article today. I guess, saying that, you know, since the governor has said that masks are now, or I guess the health department came out and said that masks are now gonna be required for kids under twelve, that he feels that we no longer have to have a six-foot requirement in our classrooms, which means that now we can open up with twenty-four kids in classroom. So I was stunned. At least. And a little irate, I have to say. And I'm trying to figure out, is that something that is gonna be thrown into our mix? That we are now gonna be looking at the possibility of opening up our, I mean, he's basically said distance learning will not, we won't have a hybrid model anymore. We'll be able to bring our kids back six hours a day in an enclosed space as long as they're all wearing masks.
So the short answer is that we will, we-
Short answer is-
The committee, I was on the reopening committee and we did not have any of, any of these discussions. Whatever came out this morning certainly sparked a lot of chatter because the, um, the county superintendent sent out a clarification at six forty-seven tonight. So I'm gonna read it, Maddie.
Okay.
So that, um, because this is certainly his words, not mine. And he said on social media, "Last week after Governor Newsom announced that masks would be required for everyone in California over the age of two in most public settings, the Department, California Department of Health revised their guidance for the use of face coverings, omitting the previous exemptions for schools and childcare." In response, Dr. Harrington has scheduled a meeting with the Sonoma County Public Health Officer, Dr. Sandari Mace, to clarify the new requirements around masks for Sonoma County schools. Dr. Harrington will also inquire whether there is any flexibility around the six-foot distancing rule for children, similar to what Marin County Office of Education has put forth in their guidance for reopening. In collaboration, or in collaboration with their public health officer. Under this type of flexibility, if approved, students as a lower-risk group might be allowed to be four to six feet apart, while adults would still need to maintain six feet as a higher-risk group. This flexibility could potentially allow some schools to run full-day programs to better serve their school community and began to make up some of the learning loss accumulated over the last several years of fly, fires, floods, and the pandemic. Plans for reopening schools in the fall is an ever-evolving situation, but what will not change is SCO's dedication to student and staff safety. We will continue to work very closely with public health while developing reopening plans and education models for Sonoma County students. Safety remains our utmost concern and no changes will be made to social distancing standards without the recommendation approval of our public health officials. We have gotten questions about the state's new mask requirement. Please note, this is not a local school decision. While we recognize that many, many parents have concerns about the challenges that wearing a mask all day might pose for their children. Masks are currently mandated at the state level. SCO will strongly encourage school districts to comply with state and local health orders as they plan for a safe reopening of school. So-
Explain to a five-year-old how necessary it is.
Yeah, so I think that, um, I think that there's gonna be, there'll be more information to come about what much, how much local control we have. You know, we, we've had a plan, you know, a, a, a plan in place that was gonna be a thoughtful, you know, re-emergence. Based on certain criteria, that seems to be kind of been thrown into a mix.
Yeah.
We're also not immune to watching what's happening around us in not just California, but Arizona, Texas, I could go on and on. So there seems to be a disconnect. I'm not sure where, what, what the, the-
You know, and, and the other part that, you know, I don't, I'm not gonna take this over, but I'm, the other part is that the assumption, I think, not being a health expert, is that children aren't getting the COVID, they're not getting this disease.
Right.
Or they're getting it- The thing is, is that they have not been in school since the middle of March. They haven't had after-school activities, they haven't had sports, they haven't been in situations where they would be exposed on any, you know, at any level, really. They've been at home, they're starting to play with their friends a lot more. We see it all over the place cuz they have to. And, but I, I don't think anybody knows what's gonna happen. And once those schools open, even if it's, you know, partially in class, that will be the determining factor. I, I'm just was kind of surprised that he hadn't talked to Dr. Mace initially before he went, before there was this big press story. You know, it just puts everybody in a difficult position at the same time where every single headline around and throughout the paper was that we're, the epidemic is getting worse.
And while we're talking about Dr. Harrington, I emailed him and he has agreed to come to our board meeting on the twenty-first. And the email I got was, what exactly do, why do we want him there? And I think this kind of discussion is very clear why we want him there. Yeah, so-
We're gonna get, um, we're gonna try to take a, I'm sorry, Caitlin.
Oh, no, I was just saying, like, it's, I don't know, not illogical for us to ask the county superintendent at any point to come to a board meeting.
I know that he, they just want, that was the email. What exactly will he be talking about? So school reopenings would be what he's talking about.
Yeah. All I can say is we are doing our very, very best and, and-
Oh, I know you are, this is no reflection.
No, 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 I, I know. And, and, you know, we're working with, with, we're working with our, our association, our federation to come up with a thoughtful plan that's both safe for staff and for our students. But it's also understands and reflects that our parents-
Yeah.
Have to go back to work.
Yeah.
And we're caught in this really different, difficult place for folks. You know, I, I don't, you're not, I know you're not surprised cuz you get them. I get emails that it's almost literally fifty-fifty that are, you know, why would you even consider opening schools to, why would you, why would you even consider not doing that? And it's, there's just, we're, we're very, there's a very fractured stakeholder group, so. And I, I think we're trying to, 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 I think we're, whatever we come up with, it's just gonna have to be really well thought out and not, and not rushed. And so what, what throws a little bit, the, the, the kink in it, that's kind of, that we were wrestling with right today is just a quick read, and it's just a quick read on the, um, on the trailer bill. The quick read is, well, wait a minute. Are we, are you saying that we have to, to, to bring our students back in our year round before we're ready to bring our students back in our year round? So we need to get, we need to get more information on that because, you know, we were planning a thoughtful approach towards reopening. And that was not hitting the ground running, which is what we're reading into this. So we just need to do more, more work on that area. I anticipate that, that obviously, you know, we may have to schedule something of a special nature, board meeting if we get, if, as we, we get more data specifically around this. But we, you know, we certainly owe it to our, to our families to do our, our due diligence and, and work really hard on this.
How does, how do the teachers and other staff feel about coming back in the fall? Do we have any indication, any survey results or?
Well, so that's interesting because one of, one of what we were hoping to do is, you know, if you're gonna sur, if you're gonna survey folks, you want, you wanna get some, you, you wanna get really good data. And how do you give good data if you're not sharing exactly what that schedule looks like? And so we want to get that schedule in place, get the committees have that schedule so that now you can say, this is what your, your world would look like. Now tell us how you feel about that. And so we're trying to really exercise some restraint and let the committees do their job. And then we want to immediately turn around and say, okay, now, this is the instructional piece about it. Now let's survey, how do you feel about this? You know, in the general terms of the guidelines and everything. And, and get that, get that, get that feedback from folks. So.
Thank you, thank you.
Running out, we feel like, we feel like we're running out of time, but it's probably because it, what, but I also, also remind us that we, we, we do have some options, you know.
When, when do, when does Cherry Valley and Pen Grove start?
Matthew's at the fourteenth, fifteenth.
So before our next board meeting?
The sixteenth, Thursday the sixteenth.
Sixteenth. They're, they're ready to, they are, you know, those staffs are, will be ready for, provide a learning platform. Just not necessarily what we saw today. That's this, there's, there's too much work. We still have work that we need to do with the Federation, with CSCA, and just the schedule. So we, we, and they're waiting, everybody's waiting for it, for that too. They want us, so that they can, they can, and so we're hoping this, hopeful this accordion process will allow folks to do that. And we'll also do this accordion process with our parents cuz we want to get feedback from them about, um, cuz they, you know, they were very, in their survey, the initial survey that we did related to distance learning, some of the questions that they brought up were specific around the challenges related to distance learning and how difficult that was managing, managing so many numbers of subjects and whatnot. And so hopefully, you know, some of the work in committee will reflect some of the, some of that information. But we want to be able to communicate back and also get feedback from our, our parents as well. We're actually farther ahead right now, if you can believe it. As uncomfortable as, as I'm sure you are and I am, we're farther ahead in this process than most of the, the, the school districts in the county because they're asking us for some, from support on what, what are we doing? And I think it's because we have really good professional, professionals on board doing the work. And so kudos to them.
Definitely. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
I am not worthy.
I mean, daily Zoom meetings sounds like a lot. Okay, anything else on, on this, Gary?
Nope.
Updates?
No, we'll have it, we'll, we'll, there will be more.
Okay. Now we're on to future business. As I said, Steve Harrington will be at our next board meeting. So I'm just gonna email him back and say, we just want some clarification on opening schools. Maybe a little bit about the budget.
I think he'll probably release a public statement cuz I just saw that one of the board members released a statement.
Wait, what'd you say, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Um, I think that he'll probably also, just in addition to what we're gonna talk about next time, release a statement about the Press Democrat article, more publicly. I already saw that a school board member for SCO did a statement that was like, this is not like Dr. Harrington said.
Okay. I can ask Peter to come too, Peter Costas.
Great, yeah.
That would be great.
He's our guy. I also, I got an email about Spanish translation. So I'd like to talk about that.
Yeah, we're looking, we are looking into that. And so we should have some, hopefully, we'll have something to, that we can talk, we can bring forward.
Okay, good. And also, if there's some way, you know, once we're all back in the same room, but then to continue, I don't know, like having Zoom or some way for people who are at home to still at least watch the meetings.
Yeah, real talk, no one has cable anymore. Like, I know PCA puts it out, but even if you have cable, you're probably not tuning into channel twenty-eight or twenty-nine. Like PCA is awesome, I'm not saying that they're not useful, but I think at this point, more people are going onto their YouTube after the fact.
Yeah.
So yeah, some sort of live stream could be good.
Okay.
Um, it wasn't a, it wasn't a drag, I'm sorry.
That what?
I was just saying, I love you PCA, like, I'm not trying to drag. Get as many people as possible, I just kind of mean.
We also, um, do some excellent, I, during the public comment, there were some questions about Circle Up. So could we maybe kind of explain that in a little bit more detail?
Yes, and I actually, I, I had a phone call with that parent as well. And it was just, there was some conflation of, um, around, you know, the, the McKin-
You know what, I, we, let's, let's, let's not talk about it cuz it came up in the public comment that we didn't like that.
Yeah, can we just put it on?
Yeah, well, I think that, that this is a great way to kickstart the work that we were going to do, starting in March. We can come back and talk about it, starting, the process that we're working on with Circle Up is, I'm gonna start with the board.
Right.
And then we're gonna be working on our trainer, a trainers' model. And it's really gonna be focused on, in the initial phase, the adults that are gonna be leading out training of the adults. And then we can start looking at, how are we gonna, you know, what that's gonna, how that's gonna grow from there in our community. So we can do a kind of a revisit on where the direction we're going as per the board's goals. Okay?
Yeah. We want that young man come.
The one that we all wanted to hug.
He was pretty good.
Yeah.
We want it, yeah.
I did, I did talk with Circle Up and they're gonna do the first sessions remote because they're not back in person until October. So he will be on the calls, but we're starting with the board training, August eleventh will be via Zoom.
Yeah.
And I just wonder, I mean, just with everything going on in town, I don't wanna like ignore, you know, all the issues in our community. I'm sure, like myself, many of you guys have been in the parks and seen all the artwork and there's just been a lot around that. Caitlin alluded to some of it earlier, but I, I don't know, Circle Up or, I'm, I'm not sure who the right people would be to engage the kids more. Like, I've met a ton of junior high and high school students at the park and they just have a lot to add and a lot to say. I would just like to somehow bring them in. I don't, I know that we're doing like Train the Teacher, is there like Train the Student as well? I know, like, we would have like peer mediators when I was in high school. Just cuz the kids are seeing a lot on social media, like Instagram, Snapchat, like a lot of hate speech. And so just, you know, just how they can maybe be better advocates and a go-to person on their campus when there's any type of racism or any kind of isms going on, so.
Maybe different secondaries could hold like a, just like a space on Zoom just for the youth to come and like talk and process out loud.
Yes.
I think that would be great.
I think we're gonna, you know, we, most of our, our leadership team, at least eighty percent of them, were trained through the Youth Development Network. And, you know, the big piece in all of that, and I think we're really poised, right? We were, you know, part of what we wanted to do with some of our Circle Up training was use that as a driver to authentically have student, real student leadership taking place throughout our, our, throughout our schools. And so one of the things that we're exploring right now is, you know, what does that authentic leadership really look like? Because we don't want to patronize kids. We want to, if they're gonna come, we want to put them in a position to be able to really make some decisions. So we're looking at some type of a youth, youth development, our youth task force to work on items and, and also broad-based, that it's not like one task force, that depending on different, different things that are, that are, that are taking place and give them, you know, true voice in, in the work that we're doing. know, true voice in, in the work that we're doing. So it's something that we're going to talk about at Cabinet, because accessibility is everything, and when you have, you know, we need to hear their voices, and we need to hear their ideas, moving forward, more than ever now. That sounds great, I will tell you that it's a challenge, because it, 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 quite frankly, for some folks, it, it's a passing of power from one person to another group, and folks just have to be okay with that. Because, and it, and that's, it's, it's time for us to really start doing some, some, some real meaningful things, and it's, some of it is, some of the things that kids really want to talk about are, are, as you know, are things that not only lay them, lay awake at night, but also just practical things, that they, they do not understand why certain things are set up the way they, they are, and we need to be able to be an avenue for all that stuff. And so we'll talk, we'll be bringing some more back on this, we're going to, we, we want to bring it back as part of our conversation related to, with Circle Up, about how do we authentically get our students empowered to do really great work as one of our partners? And so we'll have some ideas of, of thoughts that we've, we've all either seen or used successfully, that we would like to take from a micro level to a more macro level. Okay?
Oh, that's good. Any, any other future business, my dears?
Thank you all for working so hard.
Yes.
Really.
Thank you, guys, for sitting through Chris's budget presentation.
Oh, they're a joy.
She kind of read it.
They are a joy, she is
You know what, Chris, you really explain it really well, you break it down, so I appreciate that tremendously.
And those of us that are mathematically and budgetly challenged, really appreciate it, because I think I finally understand the budget.
Like, after
Being a negotiator in Tamalas for forever, and kind of looking at it, and I feel like I finally get it now.
Well, thank you.
Any other future, future business?
Thank you, I appreciate that.
We appreciate you.
And Chris, I worked at Happy Steak, too, when I was a teenager. It's true.
Did you work for Vern?
No, I worked at the one in Turlock, California.
Ah, okay.
Beautiful Turlock.
Turlock?
Look how far we've come.
Home of the Happy Burger, I'm just saying.
Oh, gosh.
Okay, so I guess I can adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you for everyone, you all.
Thank you all for coming, participants.
Yeah, we've been having, like, great participation.
Great.
Yeah. Uh